We'll call the regular meeting, the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's my understanding we won't have any minutes read today, is that correct, Jackie? Okay, well, we'll have two minutes next week. And it's nine o'clock and we have our high sheriff, David H. Kaufman, with us this morning.
I'm ready to motion.
Welcome you up to the podium, and if you need to adjust the mic down, feel free to do so.
All right, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the hospitality.
Anytime.
I'm here this morning, gentlemen. I have a letter here I'd like to preach to the commission. It is my desire to hire Richard W. Kitts Miller for the part-time position, process server and bailiff for the Upshur County Sheriff's Department, effective February 11th, 2013, at a rate of $11 per hour.
Okay.
Give this to me.
Thank you, sir.
Use the record.
Okay, we have a request from the sheriff. As so stated, we have a motion to approve the sheriff's request of the hiring.
I move.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments?
One thing I think we probably need to follow up on is Mr. Kitts Miller currently serves on the civil service board.
Mr. Parker, that's the next thing I was going to address. I have a letter here from Mr. Kitts Miller. He is currently a member of our Upshur County Civil Service Board Commission, and with your blessing, with him coming on board today with the Upshur County Sheriff's Department, and he's here to letter his resignation for the civil service.
Okay. Do we have to accept this, or is this just...
It needs probably approved and put in the minutes, yes.
Okay, so...
I'll move that we accept Mr. Kitts Miller's letter of resignation from the Upshur County Civil Service Board.
I'll second it.
Even though that's not correct parliamentary procedure, we will vote on that motion first. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, same sign. Now we have a motion to approve his hiring. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, same sign, motion carried. We can change Robert's rules.
That's okay. That's all the business I had with you gentlemen this morning. I appreciate everything.
Well, we thank you, and we'll let you get back to...
Thank you very much, sir.
Good job. Okay, our next scheduled appointment's 9:15, and so we have a little bit of time before that. And it's my understanding our 10 o'clock appointment is canceled. And so we have, first item is approval of volunteer Sherri Walsh, OEM and SERC team. That seemed run through all proper agencies and got all their documentation.
Yes.
Okay, then we'll need a motion to approve that.
I make that motion. I know Sherri, very community-oriented individual. I think she'd make an asset to the SERC team.
Okay, we have a motion to second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, same sign, motion carried. Approval of intern Cory Kircher, Community Corrections Program. Is that a paid internship, Willie, or...
No, that's part of his study through West Virginia Wesleyan College.
Okay, do we have a motion in that we approved the intern request?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, same sign. Picking up J.C.'s bad habits and making a motion. Okay, next item is approval resignation of Patty Jo Gum, Animal Control Officer as of February 15th, 2013. We have a motion to approve that resignation.
Just a question, just a general question. Did she proceed, was she designated a humane officer, did she move to that position?
No, we had never went through any training to accomplish that during the time period.
Okay. I would move to accept that resignation.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, same sign. Now, a follow-up to that is approval of employment for her replacement of Michael Douglas Miller, Animal Control Officer as of February 11th, 2013, at the rate of $9 per hour. And that's the, that was on the list, Willie, when we advertised for that position?
Ms. Gum, if I remember correctly, was hired in the middle part of November of last year. So Mr. Harris, of course, had conducted interviews at that time, and just went back to those applications and selected another individual for consideration of the commission instead of re-advertising the position since the applications were relatively new.
Right, okay.
What is Mr. Miller's qualifications or background relative to animal control or related issues?
I have his application here if the commission would like to see it. Worked as a site supervisor for an outfit out of St. Albans. I think it's a security-related, previous security-related position. And then has worked at Alaris here in Buckhannon previously. The application doesn't indicate any animal control experience necessarily.
Okay. I've known Mike several years. He's been involved, I think, president of Beagle Club. He's been with Beagle Dogs and really active in hunting and raising Beagle Dogs and training. So he does have some background.
Yeah, background, yeah, but...
Not employment background.
Not employment, yeah, but experience.
Association with animals and related, thank you.
Okay, now I'd ask for a motion that we approve the hiring.
I'll make that, I'll move for that.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, same sign, motion carried. Okay, it is 9:15. And we have Virgil D. Miller, Chief Deputy of Administration, Helen R. Phillips Assessor, Debbie Thacker Wilfong, county clerk, requests usage of 120 days of sick leave for retirement service credit. Who'd like to speak first? Helen? Ladies first. Debbie?
I guess, it's just a follow-up from last week's meeting. And at the policy board that we would have had in '07, that we all had agreed, and you all agreed, promised us, that we would have the 120 days unless we could show other documentation. So I'm just asking for you all to give us what you promised us.
Okay. Do you have a copy of that, one or two sentences, the way that was stated?
August 2007?
Is that in...
August 1st, yes.
I was not providing a copy of that.
I've got it.
Is that on last?
That's the verbiage of it.
Oh, okay. Here it is on last week's...
No, it's this week's, it's in today's.
No, that's the policy, that's all.
That's the policy, not the...
That's the policy that was adopted.
Well, that's what I was talking about.
Here's what the minutes of the policy board meeting. It says elected officials have requested a sick leave that was accumulated before becoming a county official to use as service credit. Debbie Wilfong is to check and see if she has records to show the amount of time for each official. Willie Parker is to include this in the policy manual.
Okay, and what we have here is what's in the policy manual, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And it says elected officials may utilize any unused vacation and/or sick leave earned as a full-time employee of Upshur County prior to their election as service credit for retirement purposes. As of the date of adoption for this policy, the maximum credit available for current officials will be 120 days. Full-time employees elected to a county office after the date of adoption would be eligible for any and all unused leave to be converted to service credit as per statute of West Virginia. Within 90 days of policy adoption or election, an elected official would need to submit sufficient documentation and verification of the unused leave balance to the Upshur County Commission for inclusion in the official minutes. In a case of officials serving at time of adoption, sufficient payroll records may be unavailable for verification. In that case, the official would need to submit a sworn affidavit to the Upshur County Commission for inclusion in the official minutes. So apparently the 90 days is what we're, what the decision needs to be hands on. According to the policy, stand up there Virgil, are you wanting to talk?
Yeah. Well, the issue, I think one of the issues is the 90 days because, you know, I was at, you can see by the minutes, I was at policy board meeting that day, and I don't recall where the 90 days came from, nor I don't think Debbie or Helen or Mike, you know, Mike wasn't there, but I don't think he knows where that 90 days come from. Nevertheless, it says from adoption or election. It doesn't say which election. My letter was submitted to you January 4th, and it was within 90 days of the November of the election.
Do we have a date, Willie, when the policy was adopted? Do we have a specific date? Did the commission make a ruling during a commission session when, a specific date when the policy was adopted?
I'd have to go...
It was discussed in the policy board.
11th of February 2008, I believe, is when this, that you're representing was adopted.
By the commission at a hearing, similar to what we have today.
No, it was a policy board. I don't think it was adopted.
Okay, I want to know when the commission as a body adopted that policy. And it was included in the policy handbook. Do we have records?
Here's the January 10th, '08 policy manual, the updated one.
Right, but that policy that was agreed upon or was discussed at a policy board meeting, before, to my way of thinking, before it becomes policy, operating policy for the county employees, should be acted upon by the commission who were sitting at that time to officially adopt that policy. So I want to know, as I was sitting here, and it just hit me as I'm here, it's not something I thought about before, I'm thinking, did we adopt that policy officially on the record by the commission following the discussion in the policy board?
No.
We did not. In other words, the county commission sitting at that time did not make announcement as a matter of the official record that this recommendation for the 90 days and the other additional things were adopted as policy by the commission.
It's been a practice previously, as far as I know, and I'd have to go back and check, but as far as I know and can remember, the original, 1995, which I researched, and that's when the July 1995, the original guideline handbook, policy book, whatever you want to call it, was put in place, the elected officials at that point and the commission at that point worked on it, and the commission adopted that policy at that point, that book at that point.
You said, just, not to interrupt, but okay, you say the commission adopted at that point. Did the commission in a public forum take a vote on adopting that policy?
Yes.
Okay.
And the elected officials at that point also that were in office concurred, and the minutes reflect that they were all in agreement also at that time with the procedures outlined in that book. Since that time, I don't believe, that I can remember, and I'd have to check, but I don't believe the county commission, setting as a corporate body, has necessarily approved all revisions. You know, it's been the practice that the revisions are submitted to a policy board meeting, which the commissioner present is a member of, and the other commissioners attend. So whether we need to do that in the future, that's something we can talk about. But it's been the practice that once everybody agrees, then a new revision is put in place. And this one was January 10th, 2008, is when this policy was put in place, and then that's distributed to all employees and all officials.
My question then is, the policy board, which consists of all elected officials, correct, other than the magistrates?
It does not include circuit judge, magistrates.
Right. Elected officials nonetheless.
Surveyor, I don't know if they're, I don't think they're listed as in there, but...
Okay.
Commissioner President, county clerk, sergeant clerk, sheriff, assessor, and prosecuting attorney.
They meet monthly. I think it's typically the second Thursday of the month?
Correct.
And during that meeting, they discuss issues and back to the county, correct?
Yes.
Do those issues, or do the discussions of the policy board, do they establish policy? Do they, are the recommendations from the policy board, is the policy board been given authority to make decisions relative to, I mean, decisions that are firm commitments? Or does that, those decisions that are recommended by the policy board have to be acted upon by the commission to become policy? What is the purpose of the commission if the policy board makes decisions and we have no decision-making authority? That's, I'm just...
The policy board is not a legal separate entity created by statute.
I do not believe it was.
No, it is not, unless it would not have the authority to implement binding policy without concurrence of the commission.
How does one obtain concurrence of the commission in a policy board recommendation?
And our past procedures of practices and procedures have been, the commissioners are in attendance, if there's no objection, or we need to change this, or modify this, then could be so stated that concurrence of the commission is implied or granted at that point.
And so decisions can be made, based on this way in which it's handled, decisions can be made by the policy board in concurrence, in your terms, by the commission members present, and the public has no knowledge of these decisions because it's not a public meeting, or the public is not aware and chooses not to attend?
It is during the county commission meeting, and is outlined, you know, the specific topics are not outlined on our agenda.
Correct.
But we've had one or two meetings maybe where someone has attended. It's very rare.
But no one's told they can attend.
Even the news media here.
What's that?
Even the news media.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I don't think we've ever had the public, but I think we've had one or two news media present before.
Well, assuming what J.C.'s saying, let's say that if it is such that any policy recommendation that comes out of the policy board has to be approved of the commission. Let's go down that scenario. Then what was the policy concerning this issue before this policy changed?
There was no policy. Elected officials did not receive credit for their annual or sick leave. Of course, I don't know what the previous practices be, usually you've paid out any earned vacation is what the, usually is, should happen.
What about the sick leave?
Sick leave, to my knowledge, is lost and has been lost.
And this policy changed that, before this, it was lost, right? The policy chan, the sick leave.
To my knowledge, no elected officials ever received credit for any sick leave they've used as earned as an employee, then been elected official, retired as an elected official, and applied sick leave as retirement service credit. To my knowledge, that is never...
Now, you're saying this county?
Right, yeah, I'm saying this county.
I've checked, Willie, there's a county that do this routinely.
I'm talking about what our practice was here, what our procedure was here.
Because nobody has, ever asked for it.
Right, yeah.
And that's why, that was the purpose of this, because I believe Helen was in a meeting where they were talking about other counties that did that.
Other officials were talking about they had the, they could use their sick leave whenever they retire, so we don't accumulate sick leave on officials. And they said, no, before you were a deputy. If you have a policy manual, it needs to be in that policy manual.
Right. Okay, so in order, they were saying in order for you to be able to utilize that 120 days for another year...
Or whatever time it is.
It has to be in the policy manual.
Yes.
The question is, even though as a group, everyone agreed to this, J.C.'s questioning whether that policy's valid unless it's in the minutes that the county commission approved it. So that's an issue to consider, because if it's not in the minutes, and if indeed the county commission has to approve it, then this policy would be null and void.
Be void. And to further take that, the commission has requested input from other commissions as to the question, what is your policy in your county? And I will admit, we've only had limited response, but it appears, correct me if I'm wrong, that there is no general policy. It pretty much rests with the commission in each county as to how they adopt this. There is no template that's used.
And if you look at the letter, I gave you the email, Mr. Rafferty.
J.C. is fine, Virgil.
It says, you know, from Ms. Brady for the retirement board, it's discretionary by the employer.
I know that...
But my question is, there's no cost to the county.
Well, there would be minimal, minimal cost, my understanding, relative to some OPAP payments to...
Read her letter, it says there is no cost to the county.
I've been told at least a minimal amount for OPAP.
Well, she's the assistant manager of the retirement board, and, you know, gentlemen, I'm not going to stand up here and argue about it. It's very simple, straightforward. I've asked for it, Helen's asked for it, Debbie's asked for it, you know.
Some parts of it was not any good?
And further, in furtherance of the question, I know in the last two years that I've been on the commission, there have been times when we have voted on issues involving the policy manual. So it's not that the commission has never taken upon itself to authorize or to pass on policy within the manual.
So are you saying, are you using some parts of the policy manual, some parts were not, or you used part of it?
No, no, what I'm saying, Donnie placed it best, that we have to determine legality-wise. Is a policy that is decided or recommended during discussion of the policy board, the mere fact that the policy board itself, with commission members present, discuss an issue and agree that this is the way we should do it, is that become binding as a policy for the county? Or does that issue have to appear before the commission as an issue for a vote? And that's the question. If that is required, that it must be voted upon by the commission, then as Mr. Tenney says, it is null and void, that is the policy that is at issue here. I think that, not being a lawyer, we probably ought to get some input from our county prosecutor who serves as our de facto lawyer, and if that's not the case, we should contact our counsel that we maintain through our insurance policy. So I would move that we find these answers as expeditiously as possible, recognizing the importance of reaching a decision, especially in the case of...
Time is not an issue.
Is not an issue, okay. But we do want to resolve this expeditiously.
It's my understanding, and legal counsel can provide you additional input, or through the risk, or whatever, absent a law or regulation, your written policy that is in effect and takes basically effective law or regulation, in the absence of that, your standing practice and procedures then take the effect of law and regulation in employment matters. So just due to the fact, my opinion, due to the fact our past practices and procedures, we've been operating under our current policy manual for however long, I don't know what the last date of revision is, commission members in attendance, at least the implied concurrence could be stated, so it would be my opinion that the policy manual is valid in effect and in employment situation, employment matters, which is what they deal with, which is what the manual deals with.
Then I have a question. Why is it that on certain matters involving policy, we as a commission take a vote? Example, insurance for employees. The question regarding the direct deposit of funds from policy. Why is it we take those votes? And that is something that we do, we recognize, we take a position, and yet in this particular issue, there is no vote. What exempts, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I am trying to reach...
The retiree...
What's different about this?
The retiree, I don't know if you're referring to our retiree eligibility insurance program?
Right.
That was not in the policy manual, not included in the policy manual, and it's a commission decision then, developing, now it is in the policy manual. You know, changes to that would require, of course, your approval because we're spending money. Now, the policy board can bring forth recommendations if they want to tweak that or whatever, and can be changed. Direct deposits, payroll method, or the payment of wages is in the policy manual. The method of payment is not in the personnel and the handbook guidelines. It doesn't address the type of payment. It addresses when payment is made, but it does not address the procedure or how in the policy manual. I mean, we will be putting that in there along with some other revisions that the policy board has been, you know, talking about.
Will we take a vote on that?
From now on, we will, sure will.
Well, and I think that's, I think that's an important distinction.
Yeah, very well could be, and I agree with that. That removes all ambiguity. I mean, there's no question then whether the commission did or didn't approve it, whether it's an implied consent or whatever. It's clear black letter.
I mean, I wasn't serving at that time, and I very, very well have gone along or voted in favor of that policy, but I am serving now, and I have to make a decision that I think is, not I, but the commission. Each of us has our individual thoughts on the matter. Have to make a decision based on what we believe is in the best interest of the county, and what is in the best interest of employees and the officials of the county, and the citizens of the county.
We've had 15 revisions. Here's all the policy manuals, my time is up.
Do we indicate, it'll take us some time to go and see how many of those were voted on by the commission?
You know, that's...
I would say the original one, and I wouldn't be surprised if any others are, overall manual itself.
Well, we followed it. We, as officials, have followed, plus we've put in these manuals. So there was one, the legal policy board was done in '88, and it was dissolved. That's where you have, you know, the county official was two employees, so that was the legal one, and then it was dissolved.
Well, I've made the motion that we... Well, I've made the motion that we make inquiry, and if I should withdraw that motion or let it stand, it hasn't been seconded.
Well, we could just, what we could do is postpone our decision until we, until we seek legal counsel on this particular issue as to whether the county commission has to officially adopt a policy, recommendations on the policy, where that seems like the first issue that we need to do, so I mean, we can just postpone our decision until we seek legal counsel on that. But now, here, here's the thing, maybe you often bring some clarity. Helen, you said that we've always followed the policy, the 15 changes in the original policy, we've always changed them. Then, then this, this says, full-time employees, that would be people that were employees of the county commission, who are elected to a elected position, like the sheriff, the assessor, county clerk, okay, so full-time employees, that's people that's working as an employee, who are elected to a county office, that's after the date of this adoption, which is January the 10th, 2008, we'll say, would be eligible for any non-usual leave to be converted to service credit as per statutes of West Virginia, within 90 days of the policy adoption or election. So that makes it very clear, if you're an employee and you're elected, you either have 90 days from the time this policy was developed or approved, or you have 90 days from the time you went from an employee to an elected official, to, to, you would need to submit sufficient documentation and verification of the unused to the Upshur County Commission for inclusion in the official minutes.
I was already elected official seven years.
Okay, then you had 90 days, because you were an existing elected official.
According to your policy, I had 90 days, which my 90 days have been gone six and a half years ago, before that was adopted.
It says you have 90 days, listen, it says within 90 days of policy adoption, so if you were an elected official, you had 90 days from the date it was policy was adopted. If you were an employee and you became elected official, you had 90 days from the date you elected, I mean, that's pretty clear.
But another interpretation, just to be devil's advocate, it reads, full-time employees elected to a county office after the date of adoption, after the date of adoption. When was this adopted?
January 10th, 2008.
The officials were already, the officials were already elected. I could interpret this to be that after the date of adoption means since the election prior has been held, that this does not take effect after the date of adoption is the next election. But having said that, there have been succeeding elections since 2008, that if this were to be followed, elected officials would have filed the 90-day letter, which did not occur, if I understand correctly.
But you, if you were already elected and being re-elected, you would have already, you can't accumulate sick leave then, you've already accumulated without applying-
Right, right, you accumulate sick leave as an employee and not as elected official.
Right.
Right, that's why it was 90 days after adoption for all existing elected officials. You had 90 days after this was adopted if you were setting as an elected official at that time.
I don't think all three of us would have missed that point.
Well, I don't know, to me it's pretty-
I was very interested in that, and I was listening very closely to it.
Well, you're the one that brought the issue up, so I think you'd be interested. Did you get a copy of this as it was stated right here? Did you get a copy of this? How, how's that work?
Probably.
When we change the policy, how does that work?
Yeah, it's distributed to all employees and elected officials. Helen has a copy right there.
So you did get a copy of this very verbally right here, right?
Well, I guess we assume that what we heard in our meeting, what we had, now the words are being interpreted differently.
Well, I don't know how you can interpret this any differently than Helen said.
There was no discussion about 90 days, Donnie.
What's in the policy, though? Helen's got a copy?
At the policy board meeting, there was no discussion about any 90 days, that I recall, I'll speak for myself. We talked about 120 days, because 120 days come into play, because at the time we were county employees, the state capped it at 120 days. That's the motion, you could be here 20 years, and that's all you could carry was 120 days.
State didn't cap it, county did.
I believe that what we're hearing here is difference of recollection, difference of opinion, difference of interpretation. My belief is that is why. If it is determined by our legal advice that we receive, it is important that decisions involving personnel matters be acted upon by the corporate body, not just assumed to be in place by the issuance of a policy as a result of policy board. It must be something that is voted on by the commission in order to be effective. I might be proven wrong by our legal advice, in which case I'm wrong, but I, I don't think a policy becomes a policy when it deals with personnel, certainly, unless the commission, in open session, makes a vote, stand her down, tip her down.
Well, that's the first question we need to get answered, so at this point, we will, we'll get that answer, and then we'll apply that to the decision.
I assume that's our minds stance as well?
I think Mr. Kaufman is a little bit different than the other, the other ones we've discussed, in my opinion. That's why I separated the discussions on the agenda.
And the issue there being, Mr. Parker?
The, an employee, as our current policy, whether it's been voted on by the commission or not, I'd have to look and see if this was in the original handbook, but when an employee leaves the employment of Upshur County, for whatever reason, their sick leave balance is canceled as of the last workday, it's, it's lost. And that's what I've copied that section, a couple of sentences of, of that section, if you're, sick leave may be reinstated if the county rehires a full-time employee within a six months, you know, from date of separation. Mr. Kaufman's situation, he was a full-time employee, deputy sheriff, was elected magistrate. My interpretation of the policy, I'm sure is different than some others, is that sick leave balance ended as of December 31st, 2008, maybe, I don't know when you- December 31st, 2008. And Upshur County, again, in the past, has not utilized or provided documented, verified sick leave balances for employees that went either as an elected official or an employee to another covered agency in, in the retirement system, consolidate of public employees' retirement systems.
We requested, the commission requested that the Supreme Court of Appeals for West Virginia, who is the governing body, would that be the case, over magistrates, that they be contacted relative to whether or not time served as a deputy sheriff would count toward retirement within the Supreme Court retirement system, and we received word on that.
I think, let me address that, I think, I think the whole issue behind that is, is that, and I know that that was checked on, but I think the whole issue is, that's irrelevant, because I'm not trying to do anything with PERS, I was under the deputy sheriff's retirement system, just as Buddy was as a deputy sheriff, you know, the deputies. In 1997, when I was hired in Lewis County, we were under PERS, there wasn't a deputy sheriff's retirement system. I elected in June of 1998, when that was established, the deputy sheriff's retirement system, to get under the deputy sheriff's retirement system, that would be more beneficial to me. At that time, I worked close to 12 years at Lewis County and Upshur. My time at Lewis County is, is frozen, it's going to be wired, you know, go toward my credit for my service for longevity, my normal retirement age. I thought that's what was going to happen here, I didn't question that, because I locked my retirement, I didn't draw it out as deputy sheriff. I'm not trying to add this time to PERS, do anything with magistrate, or wherever I may go, you know, who knows where the future leads, I'm not trying to do anything with that. What I'm trying to do, as a matter of clarity, is take my sick time, which is 66 days, 65 points, whatever it is, 532 and a half hours, however that, 60 some days, I'm trying to get that to go toward my longevity, deputy sheriff's retirement. My contention is, that was a credit of, and a benefit that I earned dear wives in Upshur County. I mean, my, my contention is, I'm not on this policy board or anything, my contention is, what benefit is it to the county employee, or any employee, wherever you work? If there is no benefit of, if your retirement's locked, if you can lock your retirement, leave it there and draw off of it, what benefit is it for the county or the state to say, and this meets the state, there's no break in service under, under the public employees' retirement system, there has to be a 12-month break for you not to be able to get it, 12 consecutive months, one year, how you want to work. What benefit is it? I, I, whatever decision you make, I contend that, whatever decision you make, then I'll make my decision on how we get in the future. But in the future, at your policy board meeting, which I'm not a part of, what benefit is it for the employee not to burn sick time? I mean, let's say Willie gets a, an appointment for the state, let's say that the governor or somebody appoints him as, into a state job, he's been here many years, and he's going to lock his state retirement, his retirement, if, if he was under a different one or whatever, what benefit is it for him to do that, if you, if it doesn't cost anything, and you guys turn around and say, well, we can give it to you, but we're not? I mean, what, I don't understand the whole, the whole benefit there of, I mean, what you're, what you're essentially saying, the way I interpret it is, if I would have known that, potentially if I was that type of employee, I'd burn my sick time, 66 days. I'm not that type of employee, but I think as a policy board, and the county commission adopts that, that this should be pro-employee and beneficial to the employees that, that are, are serving. I mean, you yourself, I mean, just, you can make examples all day, but I mean, if Buddy was under deputy sheriff, retired from there, he has the option to pay into PERS, there's no difference. I mean, if he wanted to lock his retirement for whatever reason, and take another job under PERS, and he could lost 2,000 sick hours, I mean, I just don't think that's right. When, when it's a benefit that you have, it's not costing anything, I think it's a benefit to the county employee. Now, I agree with Willie that it should be lost if you don't have, if you're not locked. I mean, if you're, if you're four or five years in, you know, less than five years into it, and you quit, boom, it's gone, you've lost it. You know, I don't, I don't contend that, but if you can, if it can benefit you in the future to an employee, what, I just don't understand the whole, why not do it? I mean, it's not costing anything. Other counties are doing it, it's, it's, it's a, it's an option that you three have, according to the retirement board, to let's have it or not. And I just think if, if there's, if there's no cost or, or very minimal cost, it should be a benefit and a reward for you to be at work and not to use your sick time. And that's my opinion, and my, my difference in, in, from, from these other three elected officials is, and I keep hearing this, the 120-day cap, I, I'm not in, I'm not in that. Mine, mine is documented, you have the timesheet there, either in front of you, or Mr. Parker has it in the packet, but I just don't really, yes, I understand, and why it is such a big question, is if the retirement board says that, that it's your three decision whether, whether it, we benefit from this, what, what benefit is that setting in the future? What precedence are you setting for the other employees to say, I'm going to burn my sick time, whether it's 66 days or 120 days, I'm going to go to the doctor and get an excuse and burn it, and leave the, leave the department head short? I just think to me, if it benefits the employees, if something beneficial to you, because that's something that they're going to pay overtime or someone to fill that slot, I just think you should look at that, and maybe the policy has been revised eight times, it's like your attorney said last week, I think, Mr. Rigor needs, needs to be looked at in his opinion, and I was here.
We're wanting to have him to look at.
I understand that, and I, and I think that's very, very, very wise.
Mr. Rigor's a member of the policy board, and is here on a routine basis.
That's exactly right, but I just think that, you know, it's not a perfect policy, it wouldn't be revised eight times.
Fifteen times.
Fifteen times, that's why, that's why we have these revisions, this just came up, this just came to life. Why not, why not look at in the future and say, what, what do we need to do?
I would concur with what most of Mr. Kaufman has said, I mean, it is a benefit to employee. The only issue I think the commission has, needs to be cognizant of, it, it would be a benefit to Mr. Kaufman, most definitely, but we've had other employees that have left and are working for covered, covered entities, that we have, now, whether we can go back and do this for all of them, I, I don't know who they are, I don't, don't know if they went to other entities within that year's time period, or directly to other entities, whether they've retired or not retired, you know, during that time period since 1995. If we change the policy, you know, it, it may be unfortunate in some cases, but I think you have to move, not make it retroactive, back to whenever, 1995 or whenever, and try and catch everybody up, it's forward. I think it would be beneficial for employees to be able to use, you know, their sick leave. Now, there's some employees currently, right now, we have to make changes, because the states made changes, and they cannot use their sick leave for retirement credit. No state employee, based on their date of hire, if they are hired today, the individual we just hired today, cannot use their accrued sick leave for retired service credit.
From last July 1st, I believe.
I think so. It is not allowed by statute any longer. Used to be you could use it for insurance or retirement credit, then they discontinued insurance, you could only use retirement credit, now they've discontinued retirement credit. So unfortunately, you know, current employees are going to be in the exact situation, you know, what's the benefit for me to keep my sick leave if I cannot use it for anything?
And that's per West Virginia statute.
And that's per the West Virginia statute right now.
Well, and the other point is, on this, Mike and I agree with part of what you're saying, but, but actually, this just affects people that were employees and goes on to be elected official. If you're an employee, this doesn't affect you, this policy. It's only people that were employees that become elected officials. So all those other employees, that incentive's not there.
Well, I think the, the issue you have too, is the thing you have to look at, I'm sure there's been several leave, and I could name a few, won't do that here, but, you know, they've been out from under the PERS, the ones that I can think of, well, that's not only ones, I mean, there's some that this would apply to, you know, but if they're out from under PERS for one year, 12 consecutive months, I relook at it, that benefit's lost to them anyway. So I mean, how many does that really, in fact, we, I don't know, I mean, but I know there is a couple that I can, that I've worked with that's left, that are not under PERS, they went to the private sector, or they're not.
So based on the, the change in the, in the statute, then, as of whatever that date in July, this is a mute point.
That's right.
For new elect, for new, I'm saying, as of July, it's a mute point. So this, this, whatever, whatever the policy is, or would be, is only going to affect you guys sitting here, you four people, that's all, or three or four people.
Two questions, two parts.
Right, isn't that correct?
Depends on whether the commission would, and, because that's why I see the case as different, in Mr. Kaufman's situation, he was an employee, depends on whether the commission, you know, if the statutes of West Virginia allow a certain number of employees of Upshur County, let's pick 20, just because, I'm picking a number, those 20 people fall within the guidelines of being able to use sick leave if they work through and retire and can use it for retirement credit, just as Commissioner Brady did when, when he left, it's verified and, and sent now. Yeah, that's staying with Upshur County, that's staying with our, with one, with the current employer, so. Now, let's say those 20 people, for whatever reason, leave and go to work for the Department of Highways, DHHR, City of Buchanan, another county that is a member of PERS. Upshur County in the past has not verified, to my knowledge, any employee that's left, and whether we should or shouldn't have, maybe we should have, I just, something that,
My question is, did they ask for it?
Well, that, that question's been unanswered, I asked the question, then you gave your observations. Have we, have we requested from the Supreme Court of Appeals a decision on?
Yes, and the Supreme Court of Appeals does not recognize transfers of sick leave, in this case, to their balance.
Correct.
I mean, and that's not what Mr. Kaufman's asking for, he's, as I understand it, it's, but it doesn't matter if employees have asked for it or not, if we grant an exception to the policy- If we grant an exception to the policy, then they also are eligible.
Was there a decision-making though, as to who would accept it? The Supreme Court said not they wouldn't accept it, but my understanding was that it would be decision, it would be deferred to another agency within the retirement system. Is that correct?
The Consolidated Public Retirement Board.
And what did their, their reply be as to?
They leave it to the discretion of the employer.
Correct.
Of what balances are verified and provided to them.
So the commission, in this case, if I understood correctly, would certify that we would support his sixty-six days or whatever at some point.
We have not done that for any other employee.
Okay. I understand.
I mean, I think, you know, I, I think you completely understand, but I just want to reiterate, mine is different because I'm not transferring from PERS to PERS, you know, after I elected as magistrate. Mine's a different retirement system, which is locked there, I didn't draw that out. I think that makes, to me, that makes a difference. If it was PERS to PERS, then the, you'd be up to the Supreme Court to say, you know, if I was probation or something, which did accrue time, would they accept a transfer of time? I think that's still, we could reverse back to the other system.
I, I got one question. Willie made a comment, and I'm going to leave after this one question. Willie made a comment that there was a cost to the county if they gave us this.
In the OPEB, that's where the cost is.
There was a cost to the county.
Right.
There was credit. How much did it cost the county for my military time that they gave me, the state gave me credit for? Which they did. And all I did was submit a DD 214 and they gave me credit for my military time on my retirement.
The Consolidated Public Retirement Board has no calculation on our other post-employment benefit cost. Our other post, other post-employee benefit cost is based on our retiree health insurance program, which is the vast, vast majority. And I told the commission, it is a very small, minor cost in the calculation of other post-employment benefit for accrued leave to be used as retirement service credit. All the state agency has in their OPEB calculation, that is a part of their calculation also, a small cost. And the overall cost, last, when I was talking to Ted Cheatham, oh, a year or two ago, ninety, ninety-five percent of your OPEB cost is your medical insurance, related to medical insurance plan, program and inflation. It's between five and ten percent of leave being used for retirement service credit, extending service credit. So it's a very small, minor cost in our OPEB calculation. And it's a liability, it may be a cost if you fund the liability.
And that is based on?
Actual rural studies.
PIA, or is that based on our, our insurance we have?
That's based on our actual rural study that we have now in our current situation.
You have an OPEB liability here, here, Garcia.
You have an OPEB liability no matter, unless you provide nothing to retirees.
Right.
If you provide nothing, you have no OPEB liability.
Because there's no future liability.
Right. And that's what the state of West Virginia has now done with their annual leave, you cannot use it for anything.
Thank you all.
Okay. Well, our next scheduled appointment's at ten-thirty, so we, we do have a visitor with us. Would you like to step up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you're involved in?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Kathleen Moore. I'm the new executive director with your Buchanan, Upsher County Chamber of Commerce. And I do apologize for my lack of not attending your meetings. My schedule has been full since I began in November first, and I would like to be considered a part of the community. I've lived here thirteen years, near the game farm, the wildlife center, and originally from Michigan and lived in a town of eight hundred people for twenty-two years and loved it very much. And then moved to Arizona and my son helped build the warehouser plant in Flatwoods. And we came here and we love it. We have a rescue farm with some dogs and cats and horses and very proud to be part of the community and look forward to developing the chamber into something even more incredible than it was before. So, thank you for letting me attend your meeting.
Well, and you're certainly welcome to attend anytime you have time and, and if you, if you're not already on our agenda list.
I am. Thank you very much. I do receive it. Yes, thank you.
And we're just, maybe you can come at another meeting when it's not as quiet as it is today, because this is a very quiet meeting. We certainly appreciate you coming and you're certainly welcome anytime and.
Thank you. And I do understand, and believe it or not, I used to be part of a Monet Division in Michigan. We had a volunteer sheriff's posse, so I was part of that group on a sidebar, but it's very interesting and thank you. And does anybody have any questions for me?
Any, any questions?
Okay, thank you.
You may have kicked your cellphone underneath the bench there.
Pardon me?
There's a cellphone underneath that bench.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm taking that's probably yours right there.
I was trying to make sure, because I can't find the mute button, that I didn't want to interrupt anybody, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next appointment's at ten-thirty, so we have about, almost a half an hour. So we'll continue down our list of things to do. First, for informational purposes, notice of public hearing, amendment to enhance time of month ordinance at eleven AM on Thursday, February the twenty-first. Increase from current monthly fee of two sixty-five to four fifty on residential ambitions and Centrex to six fifty. We have correspondence from the Western Union Division of Culture and History concerning grant awards from the Records Management and Preservation Board. Parker, if you'd like to elaborate on that.
It's the current grant that prior to Gade, the circuit clerk, was able to attain working with Ms. Palmeroy. And they did not fully fund a part of that grant, which was related to purchase of some equipment. Basically, they funded it about fifty percent. I think they reduced it by approximately two thousand dollars. And so we have to fund that and Mr. Gade and Ms. Palmeroy have already responded to that agency stating that we will find matching grants to fulfill that requirement.
And we have to give Brian credit for his work and for Megan helping him on that and that, you know, there's a lot of little grants out there and sometimes there's a lot of work in getting them and a lot of work after you get them, but things like this are beneficial to the county and help allow us to enhance equipment and getting jobs done, not using direct tax dollars, even though grant dollars are a tax dollar. Upsher County Sheriff's Financial Statement for December twelfth, two thousand twelve, December two thousand twelve. Willie, any comments on that?
No, not unless there would be questions.
You gentlemen have any questions?
I do not.
I do not. Okay. You did a good job explaining that then, Willie. General County Fund Financial Information, fiscal year-to-date revenues and expenditures as of December twelfth and revenue expenditures in the month, cash balance December twelfth. Any questions on that or Willie, any comments?
No, we're, revenues are below last year and that was a result of some of the transfer from, from another fund into the general county. And also expenditures are below, so at this point in the fiscal year, we're, we're okay.
Our cash balances are above our expenses, so.
At the moment.
Always going to have a little bit of that.
And we anticipate in the future, relative to severance tax, a reduction.
Yeah, I think ours, as we work on our budgets, our severance tax will have to build in a substantial reduction in our coal severance especially.
Thank you.
Okay. We have our monthly building permit report in page six. And January, we had six hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars in new construction, building permit, that's the new construction that people got a building permit for. That's not saying that's all the construction that's going on in the county in January, but that's. And we have agendas and notices of meetings and minutes and how we do on our, our park board, we had a, did we get, still got a vacancy there? Did you hear back from the lady?
I have not. I sent her an email, but.
Okay, I haven't heard back before. We had a lady that was addressing answers in the park board and, so we'll continue to work on those.
Alkins Road Public Service District, I guess they're having a hearing or a special meeting and has that been conducted?
I've sent them information asking that we have two letters of interest that have been submitted. And Alkins Road so far has not submitted any additional names. I think the email that I sent, I didn't, don't have that off the top of my head, is sometime next week, we've asked them to, if they have any recommendations, to get those to the commission by sometime next week so that can be filled during February time period.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else? You gentlemen? Willie?
Just have a couple appointments coming up. We have some border review matters this afternoon and paperwork in the interim.
Well, we'll work on our paperwork till ten-thirty. That gives us twenty minutes. Okay, we're back from our little break and our, we now have our ten-thirty appointment. Before we do that, there's one, I'd like to just say something before I forget it again about the addressing and mapping. The Buchanan Post Office has sent out physical addresses telling people now you can use that as your mailing address. There are some of those addresses they're sending out that are wrong because the change, the changes, some of the changes that have been made since two thousand nine that went to the post office has changed, they've not changed them. So what I would encourage everyone to do, if you haven't contacted the Upsher County Commission Office to get your physical address, that you do so and verify, because the address you get from the county commission office is the correct address. So I would encourage you, before you take the address you got from the post office and you start changing your driver's license and all your bills and everything, that you contact the commission office, verify that that is the correct address, or otherwise you'll have to do it twice. And that's not going to be a pleasant experience. It's bad enough people have to do it once, so I would encourage everyone, before you start changing anything, contact the commission office, make sure what you receive from the post office is your correct mailing address. So I'd encourage everyone to do that. Now, it's ten-thirty and we have representatives from the Upsher County Public Library concerning plan and proposed usage of property purchased from Calvin Phillips. Who's our spokesperson today?
Dennis.
Dennis? Want to step right up here, Dennis? We, we saved you a podium?
I think what we're, what we're interested in talking about is, I mean, you know, some time ago, we felt it was necessary to make some sort of a firm commitment with the property next to the library for future purposes, primarily for a parking lot. You know, libraries, in, in a lot of cases, tend to be getting smaller in terms of the size of the buildings because more things are digital now, things like periodicals, we don't keep as much anymore because it's all online. We still have a lot of traffic in the library, people coming in, but I don't see us needing a larger building, but we never have had adequate parking. In fact, I would imagine if you were going to build that library today and do any kind of proper planning, you would have, you would have seen that the space that we had for parking wasn't adequate. You know, most people do planning and look at what the, what the traffic's going to be in a building and have to have adequate parking, and we never have had adequate parking. So recognizing that land is scarce and they don't make any more of it, the county commission worked with the library and we made a deal with the Phillips family and basically we purchased the property from them, they kept a life estate. And now Mr. and Mrs. Phillips have both passed away and the property now belongs to the county and for the benefit of the library. And we, we're just trying to understand, you know, what we're going to do going forward with the property. There's been some talk of, you know, renting the existing house. We just kind of need to know what the, what the county's thinking about, to let you know what we're thinking about. You know, we would, we would like very much to raise that building at some point and, and put in a proper parking space. What we, what we did is, I'm sure all of you have seen it, is to have some temporary relief, we went up behind the Phillips house and built a temporary parking lot there, just a gravel lot, but it's, it's really not as convenient as it might be and it would be a lot better if we would build a proper parking lot down, you know, where the current Phillips house is. So, you know, with Mr. Phillips's passing, this is all, this has all just come up and we, we wanted to come to you and see what your thoughts were and we, make sure we're on the same page.
Well, I know there's been different discussions as, as far as the usage of the property and, you know, what to tear down, what to leave and what to make in parking. And, you know, that's the purpose of this meeting, for everyone to talk and then we come to a resolution, hopefully that everyone's happy with. One of the discussions the commission had for your all's consideration, and maybe it's been, it's been discussed, is the fact of we're looking at a reduction, you know, what natural gas has done, coal's down, coal severance tax is going to be down, is that the existing beauty shop is income, revenue, generating, revenue generating, which now I think that money comes to general revenue. But, and the house has some potential to generate revenue. And so one, one line of thought or one possible line of thought would be that down the road, if, if the economy continues to do what it, they're predicting, at least for another year or so, coal under the attack is and natural gas, that that would, that would be one or maybe two possibilities of revenue streams for the library. I mean, that's something, I don't know that's been discussed, but that's, that's something the library board could consider in conjunction with the total use of the property. I know the, I guess one question would be, even though I know it's not as convenient back up in behind, what percentage of that parking that's up there is utilized on a regular basis and how much of it's used when?
Often, every day.
Every day?
One of the things we did is before, we didn't have any options, so employees had to park in right in front of the library. Now, after we built that, all the employees moved their cars up there to free up the, the parking right in front of the building for the patrons. So a lot of times you go in there and there's empty parking because the employees are parking up behind, you know, so it, that parking lot gets used a lot. I mean, I don't know, it's hard to imagine what we did without it, but, you know, one of the things we haven't looked at yet is what the cost would be. First of all, we got to figure out what you want to build, then you got to figure out what it's going to cost and where the money comes from. We do have some money that we've set aside, you know, for the purpose of building the parking lot. We don't know because we haven't made any effort to get estimates yet, you know, how much we have compared to how much we need, those sort of things. I suspect that we probably don't have enough to do, to do it right, to do it the way we want to do it. But one of the problems is it's kind of hard to use those buildings and build a parking lot. And that's, we knew we were going to be into that with the Phillips's life estate and there was nothing we could do, but now that that's behind us, we just got to figure out what, what a plan is and, and, you know, what the commission wants to do. I agree with you that the revenues are going to be down and, and maybe what we need to do is come up with a plan where, I think you're going to have problems if you put businesses in there, they're going to want to know, how long can we stay? And we would like the answer to be, well, you know, maybe a year or so, but after that we want to be looking at build, putting a parking lot in. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure what businesses are going to think about if they can't be there long-term and hopefully they won't, it wouldn't be a long-term situation.
Yeah, the other issue would be, with the business, where are the vehicles?
Yeah.
Well, you have the same situation with the, with the beauty shop there, of course.
Not so much so, because she has a little bit of a parking area on the other side of the house there for her business.
Right.
I, I don't know with the, I don't know that we've had an issue with the parking, with the beauty shop parking that.
And again, it would.
One-seat beauty shop.
Right.
It's not like there's, you know, five or ten cars running up.
And there again, it would have been on what type of business. I mean, there's some businesses, you don't have any traffic, they're very minimal, there's some. There's some, as a retail type, you're going to have a lot.
I guess it'd be worse if you did something with the house, if you, you know, put some sort of retail business in there and there was traffic in and out of there.
Right.
We, over the years, we developed a détente with Phillips' family. They were pretty respectful of us and we had the ramp feed and different things, you know. There were also times, and I'm sure we aggravated them, when we had patrons parking every place. But we got along and they were good neighbors and we miss them, you know. It's a shame that they're gone, but they were nice people. But it's just time to look for the future and figure out what... We need a plan. We need to understand what we're going to do in the future and partial of that is what the commission's expectations are and, you know, what you think might happen.
Well, Willie, Greg's back there, maybe I should ask Greg. Were we going to do some checking on something about the house, the structural integrity or were we going to do some checking?
The house, as far as a structural standpoint, I think it's in good shape. It needs a new roof, but it needs some paint inside, you know, and things like that. But, you know, you all asked me to give a look at it, I did. And, you know, in my opinion, it'd be a shame to tear the house down, but being in as good a shape as it is, but that's just my opinion.
I did not get a chance to contact anybody to do a review of whether, if, you know, what type of, if any, modifications would we have to made if it was rented as a business. You know, you may not, you may have to make, you know, ADA requirements or access, you know, changes. And I did not get a chance to do that and that may be cost prohibitive if that's required, if that's the way, you know, the library board and the commission, you know, go, or short-term, long-term, no-term.
Right. What's your thoughts on the garage? Have we discussed that, I mean, as far as leaving it or...
Obviously, until it's torn down, we wouldn't mind using it to put the library's vehicle and stuff in, maybe for some storage space, but that's not a necessity, but it, you know, it's a shame to have it sitting there not being used at all.
Right, right.
But, you know, you get into this, I've never been in the building, I don't believe, but it'd be kind of a shame to go put more money into it if we've got to put a roof on and do that kind of stuff. Then we're, you know, we like to think of a roof as maybe a 15- or 20-year investment and we certainly not only anticipate not having a parking lot for 15 or 20 years, we're thinking, you know, a couple of years till we can figure everything out, but certainly nothing long-term.
Someone start to say something here?
We have the white building, the little barber area there, that's a portable building, is it not?
Yeah, that could be moved, I'm fairly certain.
And I ventured that on the recreation area out on Brushy Fork Road that might, if we were to move that, possibly could serve as a concessions location for something along those lines.
That'd be fine. We don't have a problem with that.
Unless there was some other purpose that could be established for it.
Well, then the other thing would be, since that, I mean, that might be the greatest consideration to leave is revenue, since it's back in the corner and wouldn't have that much impact on the parking. What is that, 400 a month?
425.
425 a month, I mean, that'd be almost $5,000 a year.
I mean, the way rentals are in Buchanan, I wouldn't be surprised if you couldn't rent that house for $400 or $500 a month.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe what we do is in the short-term, you rent it for a year or something until we can get everything put together in terms of funding and that sort of thing. But we don't think we ought to be there 15 years from now, you know, or even five years from now. The whole purpose was to have the parking lot. We're painfully aware because the state continues to cut the library's funding, just as everybody else is funding it, it makes it tougher for us to move the dollars to do it. But the... To do it right, we really do need a better parking system than what we have right now. What we have just isn't very nice. We need to look at some drainage and that sort of things also. It needs to be done right.
Well, if that's what everyone's thinking, then maybe what we need to do is look at renting it as a residence and not a business. Because it would be a greater possibility of renting it short-term as a residence than a business. And I don't think you would have to make the ADA changes for residents as much as...
Don't know about that.
Well, it depends on the type of business.
Yeah, I mean, I would need, I would have to research some code and see what their requirements are. In fact, your liability may be greater.
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of what we're renting down at the end of the alley here, that's certainly not handicap accessible, definitely the extension wasn't, you know. But I agree, I think the first thing to do is to check and see what the ADA requirements are, the very first thing.
The other thing that you all need to keep in mind, you know, if you rent it to a business or a resident, doesn't matter, the way the utilities are right now, you know, it's all running through the house, so that would have to be separated, you know. If you still kept the beauty parlor and someone else was going to use the garage, everything would have to be separated so that we could keep the billing separate.
Well, either that or just put that in the rent, include that in the rent and just jack the rent up a little bit higher.
Look at what the previous utilities were averaging.
I mean, the Phillipses have been renting the beauty shop and paying the electric bill, I guess, so I think you can get by with that. But the only thing we ask is whatever we do, I mean, I hate to see it sit there vacant and let's just, houses just don't do well vacant. But we're going to tear it down anyway, but we just ask whatever you do, short-term, you know, give us some time to try to come up with a plan and expenses and all that sort of thing to bring back for your approval in terms of, you know, how we want to develop it, parking lot, what the costs are. I suspect that you could easily put $75,000 or $80,000 in the parking lot.
I was going to ask how much your estimates were for that.
Pardon me?
I was going to ask how much your estimate would be.
That's just a wild, that's on my part. Of course, what I would propose to do is maybe see if we couldn't get some local folks to maybe donate some of the labors, you know, maybe oil and gas companies might do some grading for us and that sort of thing. We might get Chesapeake and some of these companies that are good about donating stone and we might cut some of the costs down. But what comes down to actually putting down the blacktop, that's going to be an expensive proposition. But we might get some of it, you know, in-kind contribution type thing. The oil and gas company's been real good with parks and schools and things, so we might try to do that, but it's going to take some time. First, we've got to figure out what we want to do. I would say that we have at least half of the money that we need to do it, possibly more. Of course, you know, you've got to do it at the right time of the year, but it'd be nice if we could be getting that done within a year, you know, looking at trying to have something nice there.
I know you have your ramp, or may ramp dinner in April, is it? Got a date on that?
I have it.
19th, it's always a Friday typically.
Probably wouldn't be available for this year.
No. Well, no, the ramp dinner will go on whether the parking lot's there or not.
It is April the 19th, Friday, April the 19th.
So that's a fundraiser that could be used for that purpose.
Well, what we can do, we'll check on the ADA situation and get with Greg on what short-term maintenance needs might be. And then we can, once we get those facts in, we can take a look and we'll stay in contact with each other through you give us a point of contact and Willie will be our point of contact and we'll work back and forth and...
Meantime, we'll try to come up with some real live prices as to what it would cost and, you know, what we think it's going to do. It's kind of interesting because, as you know, that runs uphill, so there's got to be a cut to make it, to level it out and make it the way you want. There's going to be some drainage issues there too. There's a great big culvert that runs right under the edge of the parking lot there and you'd want to make sure, whatever you do, you had adequate drainage that was tied back into that, into the storm sewers to make sure that we didn't have a water problem. That, you know, it's not just a matter of spreading some gravel and putting the blacktop down, there is some drainage and things that have to be considered and we have to make sure that grade works.
Okay.
And if we could do it right, it'd be nice to keep that parking we already have up above on that next tier up, just as additional overflow parking for, and we did have the ramp feed and whatnot.
Right.
Totally unrelated, but I know a number of people commented, I think even maybe to you also regarding the signage out there, that the way in which it's placed blocks visibility from the parking lot into the Route 20. And so part of this project could be maybe to replace that or relocate it someplace that's suitable for letting people know where the library is, but also not as anti-driver or promotes public safety in terms of exiting and entering the parking lot.
We'd like to move the entrance and exit down further from that crossroad.
You have a lot straightaway.
That's where the problem is, is that crossroad.
Right.
Nobody knows who has the right of way or who's going, of course, nobody ever uses their blinkers. It's just, it's real bad, especially when there's any functions at the school.
Right.
They're coming out there. I came very close to hitting somebody the other day.
Well, changing that entrance and exit at a different place might take care of the problem of the sign.
We would hope to do that. You know, the other thing is, people tend to think in terms of everyone has their computer and their smartphone now and maybe libraries are passe and arcade, but they're not. I mean, our circulation numbers continue to be good. We have more people coming in there to use computers and things. The nature of libraries have changed somewhat. You don't, you know, you don't have people going into the Reader's Guide to Periodical Literature anymore. Kids that write term papers don't do that, they do things on the internet. However, we have a lot of people that come in there to use our internet facilities. We also have this overdrive program now where people that have Kindles or audiobooks through the library, you can get those free. So we are like, if you look at all the libraries in the state, we're right behind like Huntington on the overdrive list as to who's checking out books from Upshur County Library. It's amazing what happens out there. It's, you know, you see the tip of the iceberg when you see the building, but when you look at the circulation statistics and compare them with other areas, our library really is a pretty important part of the community, one that I think is underappreciated.
Right.
Money's being cut back for schools. You're seeing more and more kids from schools having to use the public library because there aren't libraries, especially in the elementary schools. So it's something that's worthwhile to our community and we need to figure out how to best design a parking lot so that people can access the building. Then what do you say is we'll figure out why they put a flat roof on it.
I think there's a law against that now.
The economic demographics of the county would support you, Dennis, because many families cannot afford internet or cannot afford to have a computer. So library becomes a center for them to have access to the technology and the availability of information which they need, so.
And any of the programs that we have scheduled, we have good attendance for and the biggest problem's been not already marked.
Yeah, there are, you know, there's those conference rooms back up in the back that people could book to use for various functions and they don't do it because they can't park. Even with the new parking lot, it's somewhat limited because you could put in those back classrooms, you could put 40 or 50 people in there.
Sixty-three.
How many?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three. Well, if they all rode together and had brought 30 cars, we couldn't park 30 cars if we had to.
Think about the banquet or the ram dinners.
Yeah, so one of the things we hope to do is, we hope to be able to exploit the building a little bit more and we can find a place to park cars, but we understand that we can't do it overnight. It's going to take some time and some thought and some money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
As you develop those cost estimates, any labor would be prevailing wage.
That's just donated.
But what about donated labor?
That's fine.
It's paid labor, unless it's the owner of the business.
Yeah.
If I mention, I hate the federal government. You can put that on the record.
But even speaking of ADA, I'm not really sure that our parking lot's ADA compliant. That would be another reason to keep moving out this parking lot.
Can we start using the garage?
Is there anything in the garage now, Greg?
There's some debris in there that we probably take out there.
What is it that you need to use the garage for parking or...
Their car.
The day a coal library...
How many library vehicles are there? Or, I thought there was a garage on the right side of the library.
That was the old bookmobile garage. We use that now as our used book...
It's got racks in it.
Like most garages. The garage is full of stuff and the car's sitting outside.
Yeah, well, it's got shelving and books in it. I mean, it's used, it's not just piled up with stuff.
Right.
But, you know, we have a decent vehicle, it'd be nice to keep it inside.
The ADA thing comes in there again because the approved spot is right in front of that driveway and if a van parks there, you can't get back to the garage, so.
Now, the van you're talking about, is it used for the bookmobile?
No.
What's it used for?
We don't longer have it.
There's no bookmobile.
What's the van, use of the van?
It's a, the library uses...
The library uses...
We have 13 libraries, but we have four required.
You've got to remember that this is a service center for a number of other libraries and they're required to visit Calvicia and Randolph County and Barber County.
Tonker.
It's a requirement, so they actually spend a given time on the road. A lot of people don't realize that. It's not like the Charles Easton Library that's a self-stating individual library. We're a service center, Willie does their payrolls, we take care of their audits. I mean, we are the service center for 13 other libraries in the region. So they need a vehicle because they're required to go there.
And we do get some compensation for it, that's what we do.
Well, yeah.
Actually, we wouldn't be able to do what we do if we weren't a service center library because we actually charge these other libraries, so I guess you could say we make a profit on that, which goes back into the operations of our library. If we didn't do that, had to do it on a standalone basis, our budget requirements would be much higher than they are because whatever profits, for lack of a better word, we make go to underwrite the cost of keeping the doors open for our Upshur County citizens.
Right.
It's a good thing.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you, thank you all for coming in and we'll make the decision as the best for all the good taxpayers of Upshur County.
Just look at it this way, Don, it's a heck of a lot easier than dealing with the 911 readdressing issue.
Which we're going to check out the libraries while we're making sure...
Yeah, I haven't already changed anything.
Yeah, you want, double-check your address there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you for your service too.
Okay, our next appointment's at 11:00, have we heard? Still on?
As far as I know.
Okay, well, we've gone through all the paperwork, so we'll take another little break.